What I want to know.
When that clerk at you will recall, uh, we'll call, I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Jimmy Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Covel.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Diana Dona.
Here.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, we have the honor this evening to have Pastor Woodrow Walker from the Cross Culture Church to come and give our invocation, please, if we all stand.
Lord, we so appreciate your grace upon our lives, realize that even in seeing this city, this new city given birth, and the future that lie ahead, we can expect you to move mightily among all that's a part of the city as they serve faithfully, but recognizing that in order for great things to happen, that our dependency is upon you. You're governing our lives and guiding us in the direction you'd have us to go. So we pray that Stonecrest will be a city that will be a beacon light, not only that, but a model even for other cities within the state of Georgia to follow. We pray, Lord, even as I speak these words of blessings over the city, we believe, Lord, that through speaking them, that these words will come to pass. So bless all and bless even the business at hand. We pray that you're God, the hearts towards your agenda, towards the things that you endeavor to do, and you receive all the honor, all the praise and all the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Where the reasons to rely on the United States of America, into a republic for which stands one nation under God, in the difficult or liberating circumstances of our life.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Pastor. We'll move to the approval of the council agenda. I have several things, council, we will change here for a second. The public hearing for Stonecrest LA is not going to be heard tonight. We will re-advertise it for later date. Planning is only needs further review. Also, the first reading for the telecommunications regulation. So I'll let it in the next city council meeting with regards to its work session and its, let's hear the council. However, what we will do is add under new business, which would be number five, additional paving. That Mr. John I spoke about in work session. Also, under new business, the Mississippi Attorney attorney, straight on this one, the first reading for use table, updates for modified personnel and child parents.
Yes, sir.
All right. That would be number six on the new business. We move that from the work session. Yes, sir. Um, which one? I'm sorry. Let me see here. Two one nineteen oh two. Yeah, Mississippi Attorney. Actually, we have that for the public hearing.
Hearing. Yeah, most, uh, most person gonna deal with that.
I'm sorry, say again?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just have to address that issue.
Okay, um, both and for the public hearing. We don't need a first, some separate first read for it.
Both of the zoning ordinances and telecommunications and the text for the use table need to have a public hearing. They need code on it tonight. It's just the first read. But we did advertise as a public hearing under the number six.
No, as a public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, we need that.
Okay, all right. You don't want to keep it there. Thank you, both attorneys. All right, so there, would there be a number six for new business or separate, or we'll just do it as a public hearing?
I think you make a difference in this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying. No, 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 we have the same. There's a question I was asking, and I think Attorney President just answered it for me. Would this keep the, uh, the first read for the telecom on the public hearings? Yes, okay. Thank you, Mississippi Attorney. Just have five, just like solo start, only, only on the fifth item on the new business is the additional paving and that. Mr. Detective, talk to her. It stays on, it stays on.
Miss Mayor, under public hearing, is there a number five?
Uh, no, I'm, it was in number one area.
It was just four items on the public hearing?
That's correct. Yeah, with the additional paving on the business. That works. So yes, council, it's the original four. And, uh, council attorney? Okay. Seeing those, take a motion for approval of the agenda.
May I make a motion that we approve the agenda and add number five additional paving for new business?
All right, probably move, I have a second.
Seven.
Probably move in a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Aye, all votes. Attention has been approved. Council will go to item number seven, which is our minutes, the approval of the May thirteen two thousand nineteen city council meeting minutes. Thank you, minute two. Let's use the word reperuse that, because I know that we had those sent out earlier, correct? Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. Good minutes, when we have action items, do we, do those carry over to the next meeting, or do we have to add those back to the agenda at some point in time?
Not automatically. We can't have them add them back. Okay, council, if you see no changes or updates, I'll take approval for the minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Who for approval of the minutes from May thirteen two thousand nineteen?
Probably move, I have a second.
A second?
In a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All the votes, minutes passed. Thank you, council. Madam Clerk, we'll go into public comments.
Fay Coefield is first.
Good morning, lady, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Six weeks ago, I was promised that there would be an investigation into my complaints about the removal of trees behind my property. I was notified by a relative and by my neighbor that approximately four weeks ago, maybe five, code enforcement came in two vehicles to the property. And the neighbor advised me that code enforcement actually walked the fence of the property and saw the downed trees in the back, and was notified by them that there had been owls, white owls, which is an endangered species under federal law, in the trees that were taken down. And that they were also told that there were a large number of trees coming down. As of today, I have not gotten a response from anybody as to what corrective action is going to be taken. In the meantime, another neighbor has taken down, which I was not part of that complaint, over a hundred trees, which now makes us appear to be living in the middle of I twenty off-ramp because of the noise. So as of right now, I have absolutely no faith in your willingness to address these issues. These issues are federal violations as code enforcement reported that because they are on a stream. So, you know, I'm just going to have to go to the next level on that one. Number two, I have not received a response from Attorney Denmark regarding the September nineteen, twenty eighteen hearing that was held, and that response was due within five days after that hearing. I have also received no response from the city park or the city manager regarding two open records requests I've made. So I have no faith in that being resolved, and that is an issue that has to be now resolved by the Georgia Attorney General. With regard to the cell phone tower, you were provided undisputable evidence that that property was zoned for a limited period of time with very good restrictions on it. And that was verified by the Cav County and their records, which I gave you a copy of. As of this date, I have not heard anything from you. And lastly, we were promised by the developer that on Rockland Avenue where they're building new houses, that he would leave a buffer between the housing and the street. That buffer has now been taken down, and we're about to get the same urban ghetto, whatever you want to call it, housing and townhouses that we continue to get in Stonecrest. Thank you very much.
I want you to stay at the mic, Ms. Colefield.
Okay, thank you.
I've thought long and hard about this.
Okay.
And I'm just going to give some of the information. But I'm going to, I'm going to spare you some of what I already know.
Okay.
And we can talk about it in private.
Well, we're here now, we might as well talk about it publicly. Thank you, because we're here now.
I don't need that from you, Rob.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, here's where we are. You didn't see code enforcement by yourself over there. That was me talking to your neighbor.
Mr. Mayor, let me stop you right there. I didn't say I saw them. I said my sister told me that there were two carloads of code enforcement.
I let you speak.
Okay, but I'm going to correct you when you're wrong.
Whether it's you, your sister, your cousin, whoever it was, that was me speaking with your neighbor.
Okay.
Now, you have been feuding with this man over more than just the tree.
No, I have not.
Sure you have.
No, I haven't.
Yeah, you sure you have.
List what else I complained to you.
Now, so here's the thing. There's no white owls in the trees. There's no hundred plus trees down in the yards. There's nothing. Because I was there myself. You, the same complaint that you're having with regards to Stonecrest, saying that we're not doing anything, we investigated front to rear. Now, part of this, whether you want to have it in public or not, I'm, I'm not going to do you the way you do us. I'm, I'm going to have a, I have a conversation with you about that end of it. Let me finish.
All right, I'm listening, Mr. Mayor, because, where?
Because you...
That was not me, that was somebody back.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. I give you the same respect of thirty-plus years that you've been living here, the thirty-plus years that I've been living here.
Forty.
Okay, forty. Your forty is no more important than my thirty. But then people put in time, energy, effort, to try to, to handle the things that you want done. Is it, is it perfect? No, it's, it's not perfect. So you, you transfer your anger and your complaint from the Cav County to Stonecrest. That's, 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 that's what this is.
No, it's not.
In my opinion, that's what this is.
You're entitled to your opinion.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that.
But I gave credit to the Cav. The Cav did what needed to be done. The Cav came out and issued a stop work order.
Ms. Coefield.
Go ahead.
These trees were down while they were before the city of Stonecrest. Down before the city of Stonecrest. Now, since they're down and you're counting a hundred more, what about a gentleman that's within a stone stroll of your house, that's in equal proximity to where the, the trees down that you're talking about, who's running a commercial cable business out of his front yard? And we, as code enforcement and the mayor, went out there and cited him for that, and he's right in front of you, and heard a thing about that with regards to you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, let me tell you about him and that property. That property, if you check that property, the guy before him, that property is zoned commercial. Yes, he is in violation for having the trucks there. But as...
And the cables.
Wait a minute, but as I said, my issue was with the trees. And I have told my neighbors, my only issue, I have two issues, and I told you what they were. That is noise and trees. Now, you say the trees weren't down before. The Cav County has pictures of what the property looked like when they went out there and inspected it. They have pictures of that property. I gave you the information from the Cav County.
And I researched it for myself.
Well, I'll tell you what. I will go back to the Cav, and I will ask the Cav for the pictures that they took, because, first of all, I have, the only thing I have ever said to that man, and most of my neighbors will tell you this, including the ones that are here tonight, I am rarely home. Most of my neighbors don't even know I'm home unless they see like now is summer and I have my window open. As far as him saying I've been feuding with him, I don't speak to the man. My only complaint against him has been the trees being taken down. Now, you say you didn't see the trees. The neighbor told me he saw the trees. Now, you say you went out and cited the man about cable. Let me ask you this. What have you done about it? Because when I left home tonight, the three trucks were still sitting out there. The cable stuff was sitting out there.
And there's a process that we have, Ms. Coefield.
Okay.
That we actually cite. No, you've been talking, you let me talk now. We have an opportunity to do exactly, to take care of the citizens as we are. This is not Fay Coefield, Georgia. We, we, we take care of everything that we have to on this end of it. And where do I get irritated at? Because I'm a citizen, I'm an elected official, I'm a taxpayer, I'm everything that you are. I'm everything that you are, and then some, because I'm responsible for it here. And then I take the time out to do things that are different than we would. You would never have this voice at the Cav County. You stand up, complain, sit down, that will be it. But what we do, we go the extra mile with regards to you. I asked you last meeting, what is it that you want us to do? And to this date, six weeks later, you still can't tell me what is it that you want us to do about that man and those trees cut down before we were Stonecrest?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, those trees were cut down in two hun, two thousand and seventeen while I was in Kenya. And when I returned home, I was gone the entire summer. I have people that picked me up when I left to go and people that brought me home. I, I can bring in here at least five witnesses that will tell you those trees were there when Stonecrest became a city.
And I can give you six witnesses that are here, that we had no ordinance, nothing in place, even before you talked about with regards to what that was going to happen. Since you and I are not going to settle this this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to say this, okay? You keep saying this is personal. You asked me what did I want to do. I think those people that were in this room heard what I said I wanted to do.
Okay.
I wanted him to replace the trees. The Cav County has gone out and seen, this is not something Fay just walked in here and said today. Fay has what's called a paper trail. Because of all the things I am, I am a, excuse the expression, an outstanding investigator and keeper of paper trails. The Cav County came out and the Cav County cited him and issued him a stop work order. Under Georgia law, that stop work order remains in effect until it is removed by the person putting it in effect.
While he was in the Cav County.
When Stonecrest became a city, you adopted all of the rules of the Cav County, which included the tree ordinance.
And we cannot pick up, we cannot pick up his particular citation, or whatever it is that they had at the end of it. I'm going to give you one minute.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to finish this in this one minute. I will go back to the Cav County. I will ask the Cav County to have their, their code enforcement to send you pictures of what they cited him on. Because if the truth be told, when your code enforcement came out there in twenty seventeen to talk to him about the trees, he has taken down even more trees than the picture shows. Now, as far as me feuding with him, I don't speak with him. I've got a witness in here that'll tell you, I don't argue with people. Because I don't... I don't argue. I say what I've got to say, I give the facts. And you say I've been feuding with him. I haven't been feuding with him. I, he took down the trees. I don't even speak to the man. Trust me, I've got that power. I don't speak to people I don't like unless I am forced to do it. Now, you think I'm joking, there's a person in here to tell you, I ain't talked to my son's father in thirty-five years. So I don't talk to people I don't like, and I don't wait on them. And I don't say, I don't say, I haven't said anything to this man. The only thing I have done is tried to go by the law. I have not just said anything to him about taking down the trees. We're getting two different sides of the story. The Cav has the pictures. I'll order them. I'll go to, I'll go to Mr. Thurman, and I'll go to the District Five and the District Seven commissioners and ask them to send you copies of what the Cav County left there.
Take your time.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh, next.
Ms. Geraldine Cheyenne.
Thank you. Me and Hudson are going to say. Thanks for the opportunity to come up here, but I would like to say, as humble, as I humble as I know how, that I'm not going to be intimidated. I'm going past that. And as some of the taxpayers said about last meeting, that, uh, unofficial statements, don't intimidate me. Another thing I've talked about two-thirds, I mean talked to, about two-thirds of Stonecrest, and I keep asking, and they're asking, including the grandos, what happened to the company and the businesses that was going to come in here so gracefully and build up some of it? And I'm going to ask that question until somebody answers. As a taxpayer, we going to go through the years, thirty-five years, or forty years? I'll decide to know. My next question is, how are we going to propose almost a billion-dollar project, and we couldn't get that thousand of dollars project done? I think we, as taxpayers, should know what happened. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Suzanne Frick.
Frick.
Mine should be easy. I'm Suzanne Frick of the Parks of Stonecrest and District Five area. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to suggest that in order for anything to be placed on the city council agenda or the city council work session agenda, that the city council agenda item be completed in its entirety, particularly the purpose, facts and issues and recommended action sections. This would allow the citizens of Stonecrest to be informed. This would allow the citizens of Stonecrest to do research. This will allow the citizens of Stonecrest to make informed public comments. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Frick.
Ms. Anita Aaron.
Sarah. Good evening, everyone.
Please.
Thank you for this opportunity. This is my first time at one of these meetings. I go to other ones at the library. But anyway, mine is more of a question and a comment about the cell towers and the notification that the residents of Stonecrest have, that I only received an email with a flyer yesterday about cell towers. So I wanted to know, what is the protocol and where does the community or when does the community get notification of such thing, how these things get approved and pushed by, passed without the community having some input or reasonable amount of time to give some feedback on it? Secondly, wanted to inquire about fiber optics. I'm on the end of Penola and Browns Mill, and I have been inquiring with the FCC and other, the communications providers about us getting fiber optics and better communication and internet in our area. And I just left AT&amp;T and they said, it's still not in our area, that that's something that we have to bring to our community council or whatever, and to AT&amp;T and see if we can get a laser on and figure out how we can get better service in our area. And those are the main two things that I wanted to address and have someone address for me. Thank you.
No more public comments?
Whoa.
What? These are for agenda items. Which one?
Dave Marcus.
Here on the T mod nineteen dash zero zero four.
I would like to make public comment now. I thought that was the standard public comment form. But I'll talk about something else. Thank you.
The next, I'll just check that box as well.
I will be sure to do that.
Ms. Marcus.
Mayor, council, good evening. There's a lot of sense that I start to have that the city government is not as efficient as we'd like it to be, and has not achieved as much as we would like in terms of booting up the city. And getting to where we want to be requires a fully functioning city, and it should be at least of little surprise to me that if you look at everything we expect Stonecrest to be, the majority of the time and effort is not to booting up the city, things like various policies, like adopting ordinances, all of that which is necessary and good. But I have a sense that we decided, or the powers that be decided, to not have city employees, but instead to use CH two M, now Jacobs, because they brought to the table the ability to boot up a system quickly, sorry, boot up a city quickly, so that we can then go upon the business of economic development. And were I to point a finger at why we haven't booted up to the point that we are, I would say a fair amount of that goes towards Jacobs. A fair amount goes to distractions we've had about things, various large issues that people got emotional about, whether it's price consulting or your salary, sir, or, or Amazon dot com. They've, they've distracted us from getting things done. But today, as one example, hearing that, that Dr. Adoma doesn't think the purchasing policy is clear enough to understand who does what, that we're still getting a procedure so the council knows what they're supposed to do in terms of approvals and has enough information to make sure that a contract which comes to them has gone through channels correctly. I simply don't understand why that wasn't done two years ago by CH two M Jacobs, taking their wanted experience and their knowledge and bringing it to us. Instead, we have an employee now, or a state employee of Jacobs, now who goes to the internet, finds one from another city, brings it in, and it's still got us assistant department heads and things like that in it. Mayor, a long time ago, you, I believe publicly, I hope publicly, said that at some point we'd end the relationship with Jacobs and boot up the city's administrative people department and have our own employees. I don't know the schedule being considered for that. And meaning no disrespect to the excellent people like Julian, like Sabrina, like other people that Jacobs has brought. I think it's something that would be good to think about accelerating so we can get past a lot of nonsense and start getting done what you want to get done.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus.
That's all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to old business here with regards to the city hall build-out. I think we spoke extensively about that with regards to, in the work session. You know, I failed to do something, council, and I'm going to apologize for this. You know, I failed to do something, Council, and I'm going to apologize for this. With Council's permission, we're going to move public hearings up to, I meant to do that when we had the, when we were actually moving the updates, going the updates for a council meeting. With permission of Council, unless the Attorney, City Manager tells me different, I'm moving public hearings to now, as a matter of fact. And that would take, since, since we've talked about the City Hall build-out extensively, we'll move past that and then we'll go straight to public hearings. Is that okay, Mr.?
I think as fast as we have to go through to make it happen, because we did vote to approve the agenda.
Which is the one there?
It has been approved. We can have a motion to adjust it or to reconsider it and then make that correction. Is that how, what approval allows us to do it?
Yeah, I don't, you know, my code, I don't think you necessarily have the move to reconsider. I think you can make, or the member council can make a motion to amend the agenda to make that adjustment. All right, if that's the pleasure, Council, I'll take that motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a little motion that we amend the agenda to adjust to your stated request.
All right. I've heard the proper motion on that. Do I have a second? All right, all in favor of moving public hearings to next? As we move, say hi. Hi, all opposed? All right, we're not going to public hearings. We'll take the first, SLU one double, double oh one, personal care home thirty-three seventeen Plano Road.
Good evening, Council.
Mr. Wheeler.
For those who don't know me, my name is Christopher Wheeler. I'm the City Planner for the City of Stonecrest. This case that is being brought to you this evening is SLUP nineteen dash zero zero one. Applicant is Ms. Diane Matthews. You heard this application at April twenty-second City Council meeting. It was deferred back to today, tonight's meeting. I'm going to start to staff to provide a detailed summary of the events leading up to this point in time. If you'd like, staff can go over the detailed summary or if you have any questions for staff.
Can I answer the question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it looks like we determined that we obviously, the ordinance, decided not to require a business license for personal care homes that were three, at three members or less?
Yes, ma'am, that was correct.
So, we've established that the neighbor, I can't remember her name, not the applicant, but the other.
Ms. Rumba. Yes, Ms. Rumba, yes.
Um, did not, does not have a business license because she has three or less.
Yes, ma'am. So, at the time, the city staff was viewing personal care homes for three or less as single-family homes. So, therefore, we were not issuing business licenses for, for, for personal care homes. In the past, DeKalb County has issued business licenses for personal care homes for three or less and they didn't have any kind of supplemental regulations for personal care homes. So, staff took it upon themselves and with the, the city attorneys to review and determine that personal care homes for three or less were going to be single-family homes because we didn't, we did not actually pay at the time how many personal care homes were in the city at this point in time. So, therefore, instead of keep issuing business licenses at that time, we were going to try to determine how many personal care homes were in the city and therefore update our zoning regulations to, to address personal care homes for three or less. So, now, recently, we just passed ordinance where now personal care homes up to six, doesn't matter if it's one, two or three, up to six have to come in for a slug.
Okay, so, but that was, that change was made after this application?
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am, yeah.
So, is, are we grandfathering that in or are we using, are we, are we, let me ask you two different questions, sorry, combined two. If we did not issue, or we would not have issued a slug to Ms. Rumba because she had three or less?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Prior to today, we were using that, we were using her personal care home as rationale denied Ms. Matthews because they were in, within.
Thousand feet.
Thousand feet.
Yes, ma'am.
So, then we established that Ms. Rumba did not need a permit because she had three or less. So, would we still be considering Ms. Rumba to be within a thousand feet of Ms. Matthews?
Ms. Rumba has to apply for a business license and she has to apply for a special land use permit for her to be in compliance with, with our zoning ordinance.
With our new one?
That new one, yes, ma'am. So, right now, she has to, the end of, she has forty-five days from the notice that we sent out last week for her to get a business license. Unfortunately, depending on her getting a business license is depending on if Ms. Matthews gets her application approved. So, it really is the chicken before the egg, which one does get approved.
So, we don't account for, don't have a grandfather, I guess, stipulation for the application being submitted prior to the change?
Only, no, ma'am. Only at the time you've, you'll be said a grandfather if you have a business license from DeKalb County. Or, i.e., she would have been renewed for two thousand and eighteen.
In which she would not have because she was three or less?
Yes, ma'am.
So, there is no situation, there's no circumstance where Ms. Rumba would have had a license?
Well, I would say Ms. Rumba would have had a license if she went to DeKalb County and got approval for one. But at the time, we were not aware of Ms. Rumba having a business license from DeKalb County. The issue was trying to determine when Ms. Rumba had actually started her personal care home. By the time when Ms. Matthews came into the City Hall and inquired about her personal care home, staff determined that there wasn't a personal care home located right next to her. It wasn't until Ms. Matthews was starting going through the process that we determined that Ms. Rumba actually has a personal care home. Therefore, we would never have required Ms. Rumba to actually get a personal care home because we never knew Ms. Rumba was actually in business at the time.
So, it seems like, it seems like that we are extending a courtesy to Ms. Rumba and then kind of leaving Ms. Matthews?
Well, it would be, it would be up to, well, it could be a courtesy either way, actually, because you could approve Ms. Matthews and Ms. Rumba wouldn't be able to proceed with her personal care home. Because then again, she would be a thousand feet, she would be located to within a thousand feet of a personal care home. So, essentially, it's up to City Council to determine which applicant or which person should be able to operate personal care home or you could allow both of them to operate. I mean, that's within what you guys want to do.
Yeah, that's an interesting question.
Have a question. So, you're saying that if you have three or less, there's no need for a permit?
No, sir, no. That's what DeKalb County was issue. For, for now, we are, it doesn't matter if it's one, two.
So, our rule now is one through six?
Yes, sir.
The same permit?
Yes, sir.
No distinction?
Yes, yes, sir, no distinction. Doesn't matter if you're operating a personal care home, you have to apply for a special land use permit.
I'm going to help Chris if that's the right.
Chris here.
DeKalb County considered three or less to be a single family based on their definition of family. So, they said that it wasn't a business. So, it didn't have to have a business license. So, the existing personal care home wouldn't have had to go through the process in DeKalb County to get a license. When city, when we became a city, we didn't necessarily leave with that interpretation and that's why we changed the ordinance.
It was every, and I'll take you step by step, just to hear it again. So, every one to three personal care homes should have been identified at that point that they were in violation?
They would potentially have been pre-existing non-conforming, but we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. They may be pre-existing legal, they may have been in possession. We'd have to look at it case-by-case basis. But DeKalb County's unofficial enforcement view of it was that they weren't going to bother making them get a, a business permit.
So, basically, because we discovered Ms. Rumba later, she gets the opportunity to?
She wouldn't have necessarily had to have had a license in DeKalb. That's the one thing.
Right, yeah, I get that. But now that she's in Stonecrest, she does. Right, but we've only discovered that because of the other applicant.
She would have to show she was either legally non-conforming or get a license. That's going to be on her burden.
You'd have to show that she was either legally non-conforming.
So, grandfathered them, year ordinance changed. Or that she has to get the license. And that's something we haven't fully discovered yet because we've been waiting on the process.
Okay, what, I'm going to finish. Ms. Matthews, I believe that is the new applicant. Was that the only reason she was denied? And that is she was within an existing home over there? Was there another reason she may have been denied?
There were other reasons in the report.
Okay.
Well, the other reason? I mean, the main reason was the, within a thousand foot of the, of the existing business. That was, that was the main reason for staff.
The main, but was there another, a minority?
I can't remember for what Plan Commission stated, but that was just the staff. I can't remember at this point in time.
So, with this, this particular slug, Mr. Attorney and Attorney, do we go into an official public hearing with it? Or is it happening conversation for today?
No, sir, you've already had your public hearing, I believe. Right, Chris?
Yep, yes.
This is just your, you can either vote to make your decision for this one.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, maybe this question is for the city attorney. I'm just wondering, after reading the file and listening to the hearing, is this something that the council would decide versus the courts? I mean, did the chicken or the egg come first? Is that something that is within our authority to decide? Or would that be something that the DeKalb County courts would decide? Just asking, I don't know. It seems to me that we're kind of like acting as the court right now.
The decision that you have today is only whether or not you want to grant a special land use permit. So, if you are complying those factors and you think that they meet the qualifications, you should grant it. If you think they don't, then you should not.
Mr. Wheeler, what's your recommendation?
Well, our recommendation was, was denial. But Plan Commission recommended denial as well. I mean, but, I mean, again, this was just based off just black and white. Again, there are mitigating circumstances to it. So, it's up to you guys, you know. I just look at black and white, you guys, to get a chance to be able to gray, unfortunately.
What's called?
Yeah, I am just having a difficulty with this one because the rationale is because, the rationale for denial is because there's another personal care home within a thousand feet. But technically, there at one point was and then at one point wasn't. So, the rationale for the decision for denial is still gray.
We need more time.
I, let me ask one more question, Emily. When you said that they have to prove that they were legally non-conforming, that means that they were allowed to operate without the slug from DeKalb County?
Yes.
And how does one prove that?
They would have to show when they began operations and that it was legal at the time that they did. So, that whether she had all the permits, she would have been required. If she was required by the state to have any permits, whether she had that or not, things like that. Whether she was legal under the zoning at the time. And it appears, I have not done an investigation on this, but it appears that she would have been legal under DeKalb County's interpretation. Whether we have the same interpretation is going to be the second step. And I'm not really prepared to make that determination because this could impact more than just this one case.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Which is my biggest hesitation. If we make a decision today, we'll have to stand behind that. Thank you regardless for a future example. When is her deadline to turn in this proof of legal?
It was, we sent out the notification about two weeks ago. I think the deadline is the end of June, I believe.
Then that's just as council and, and City Attorney and City Planner will move forward to further day.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think Ms. Matthews is here. I just would want to ask her if she would be okay with consenting to that. Ms. Matthews, they're asking that we move your case again to the next council meeting? And we just want to make sure you were, you understood that and agreed to it.
Um, what can we try to determine?
Well, simply put, ma'am, you know, we don't take the decision lightly of somebody else's livelihood. And on top of that, this will have ramifications for others for the future. So, I'd rather delay it and get it right than come to rush decision today. And then we got problems in the future.
Yeah, I understand, but just for the record, both of us, myself and my neighbor, just saying, myself and my neighbor, we have no hard feelings against each other because we only discovered each other after I put my sign up and, you know, did all of this. I did everything right. I came here, I checked, I did, I put my signs up, I sent my notice out, I had my meetings, I did everything right. And I did it first, but that doesn't say that she was not there. In this circumstance, I'm wondering, would it be so hard, since these rules were not there before, to just give both of us an opportunity? Both of us have spent our life savings investing in this because neither was aware of each other being there and you guys did not have a law against us being there at the same time. So, why should either of us be punished? I'm just saying, you know, I mean, I could stand here and plead my own case because I think I did everything right. I did not go behind doors and tried to go around it. I came straight up, I went up front, I paid my money and I did everything right. And am I going to be punished for doing everything right when there's so many homes out there that are not?
Surely not. And I think that's, I think that's our point for deferring is that we don't want to punish either resident. So, we need the opportunity to determine whether or not Ms. Rumba was illegally, was legally non-conforming. If she was, then she's just as, she's, she has every right to hers, as you do. So, we need to, we need to get to a point where we understand that in its entirety, was she legally conforming or not? If she was, that's one decision. That leaves options in one lane. If she wasn't, that leaves different options in another lane. I think your proposal is a reasonable proposal, but it's for me difficult to make that decision today not knowing if she has been, if she's legally conforming or not. So, because she has a forty-five day deadline, I think it would be a dis, I think it would be a disadvantage to both of you to make that decision before her time period is up to prove whether or not she was legally conforming or not.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
There's another question, Mr. Wheeler. I believe the other issue was the question of residency. Is that under the Stonecrest code?
Yes, sir.
You ought to be a resident of the personal care home?
Yes, sir.
So, has that been satisfied?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir, yeah, that's been satisfied.
Good. Both, both parties.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question as well?
The currently, are there home care, daycare, home care services? I don't know, currently? And has that existed prior to all of this? Okay, and, but at that time, it was three or under? Is that right?
I only have one person, but I wanted to expand. I only have one now because it's been back and forth where the state is requiring your permission and I'm just pending, you know. This is by default and that's been pending. The state is requiring you guys and they called here. They were told that my situation was pending and so I'm now pending because you guys haven't given me permission. So, I, you know, I'm allowed to have this one person while I'm waiting, pending, and I'm on the verge of, basically, my home is closed now because of this pending, pending, back and forth. So, it's, it's a cost factor to me while I wait.
Prior to, a couple of months ago, City of Stonecrest allowed for up to three residents, I mean, to take, to take care of three people in a home without a license. At that time, you, you were practicing, right? And you only had the one individual as well as your neighbor? Right, in the same?
No, I come to find that, yeah.
Right, and so technically, you guys both was in conformance at that time. Is that right, Attorney? At that time, not, no?
This is the first I've heard of this. We received a demand from Ms. Matthews' attorney quite a few months ago that said something differently, which I feel should possibly be sent to the council before they make this decision.
Thank you, so.
So, you're not operational now, is that what you're saying? It's affecting your business now?
It is affecting my business. I only have one that year because I can't, I'm waiting on spending as to which way I go. I mean, this has been going on since, before I even started, I came here. Before I bought the land and bought the house, I came here and I, you know, stole that, I checked. I checked, I didn't see anybody beside the area around me. I came, I spoke to Mr. Wheeler, he checked, he didn't see anybody and he says, okay. I left and I signed with you for that house. Knowing that, okay, that was the only thing that I could not, I didn't have control over if I already had a neighbor, all the other things, all the other criterias that you guys had in place, I could, I could. I could, I could, um, I could apply, uh, you know, apply to, I could get over, I could do like a handle. If I was told there and then that I had a neighbor within a thousand feet, I would have said, no, thank you, and I'd walk away from it. When I checked, I did not even go by my own checking, by, by, by my own results. I came here because I wanted to know, because this is my life savings that I'm invested in. I'm a registered nurse and I'm looking for a way to extend my services and to do something for myself. That was my thought. So I tried, I thought I covered all my bases. Then when, after I had my meeting, you know, he told me to send a meeting to them, I had my meeting in a reading library, and I'm waiting for him to come and do his checks. I had my sign out, everything, and I'm already, and we're working on the house, and everything is ready for him to check. Then I get a letter in the mail, he called an email to say that someone showed up and said that there's a house beside me, you know, within a thousand feet of me, and I can no longer attend. So at that time, apart from my heart being broken, my finances were now broken. Because I thought I had done all I needed to do before I start a business. Frankly, I'm not a business person, I'm a nurse. But at the same time, you put it in black and white out there, this is what you need, and this is what you need. And I did my best to follow those rules. So when I got that, I said, but that's not fair to me. So my email to Mr. Wheeler was, what happened? I checked, you checked, there was nobody there. When did this person show up there? Then I walked next door and I knock on the door. They were not there at the time, because I don't know what's going on, but then we met there. Nice people, nothing wrong. We spoke. She don't have a problem with my being here, I don't have one with her being there. This is not a big business where people are going to be walking in and out. All I'm asking for is the ability to take care of four people, even though your thing is six. My house can maybe house maybe four people.
So, ma'am, um, if you don't mind, I try to be as fair as possible about everything that we do.
I appreciate that.
In, in, in the spirit of fairness, what I try to do is, whoever, um, uh, council district it's in, you know, I give them the most weight with regards to how they want to proceed in an area. In this instance, it's Councilwoman Cobble, Councilwoman, and then I'll take the lead in what you say.
Yeah, I'm going to leave for the furl. I need to know if Ms. Rumba was legally non-conforming or not.
Okay.
And if we gave her 45 days, then we should allow those 45 days to come.
Second.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor of the furl?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Number two, 19002, personal care home, 5714, South Crest Lane.
Good evening, uh, this, uh, SLUP-19002, applicant is Mr. Franklin Champagne. Location is 5714 South Crest Lane. The applicant is here to apply for a personal care home for up to six, up to six individuals. Uh, location for the, uh, for the subject property is located in the South Crest subdivision. Uh, applicant again is looking to operate a personal care home on up to, up to six, but plans on only, um, taking care of three individuals. Uh, the plan commission recommend, recommend denial of his, um, application. And applicant is here with his representation if you have any questions.
What was your reason for denial?
Oh, the plan commission recommended denial for the application, uh, because there was enough existing personal care homes in the, in the, within the area. Staff recommend approval, uh, the staff leader, uh, admitted to either community, and there wasn't another personal care home within a thousand feet of it.
So I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I heard one question, but I got on the statement.
Oh, so, no, so staff recommend approval, plan commission reckon, uh, recommend denial.
Yeah, I have a question. This is District Five, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this went to the appeals board also?
No.
This will go to the appeals board?
No, no, ma'am, the applicant, the owner went to the Board of Zoning Appeals for another matter. This application did not go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Chris, there is not another, uh, personal care home within a thousand feet?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. There's not another personal care home within a thousand feet of the applicant.
And the plan commission sided because there were too many in the neighborhood?
Too many in the community at the time is what I remember them stating.
When you said too many, how many?
He didn't give me an answer.
5714, I don't believe the plan commission.
All right, then what we're going to do, we'll open for a public hearing. Um, I'll take a, I'll take a motion to open for a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion, I made the motion to open up the public hearing.
Second.
All right, probably move to seven. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Um, Madam Clerk, we will take those that are in the beginning for... Those speaking against.
I don't have any public comment cards for opposing this.
Okay, all right, I'm out for... And speaking for either?
The applicant is here, though.
The applicant gets a chance to speak.
Okay, circle.
But I don't have anyone from the public besides the applicant.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm, uh, William Tomlin, Law Office of William L. Tomlin, Decatur, uh, representing the applicant. I think this should be, uh, certainly much easier than the previous, uh, applicant. Uh, but I think there should be an easy application for you as the staff report shows. And as the staff mentioned, uh, Mr. Champagne's application does meet all the requirements of the City of Stonecrest zoning. Uh, and, uh, I think the, uh, commissions, the planning commission's denial, I wasn't, uh, retained at the point of the commission, so I certainly can't speak on their behalf. But from what I heard, uh, the notion that there are too many personal care homes in the community is a bit too voy, a bit, bit too vague to deny this application, since the ordinance specifically specifies that, uh, as long as there are no other personal care homes within a thousand feet, then it's okay. And, um, along those lines, I think it also would further the, um, policies in, uh, in the city's zoning ordinances, also in DeKalb County's comprehensive plan and, uh, the City of Stonecrest's new comprehensive plan, uh, in regards to special need elderly, elderly persons providing access to more housing, uh, and accommodations for, uh, people with disabilities. Uh, as you may or may not be aware, uh, the applicant, uh, currently operates a personal care home at his current residence in Decatur. He currently has, uh, two patients, and he'd like to, uh, move, uh, his family and those patients to, uh, the City of Stonecrest. He thinks it's a nicer house and a nicer community, will be better for him and for his patients. And so, uh, in the end, it really wouldn't be much more than, you know, a couple living with two, two elderly parents. It'd be very similar to, uh, a single-family residence or a family unit, as, as, uh, they were discussing in the previous application under DeKalb's former zoning. Uh, it would have been basically a single family. And, uh, as I said, I think it meets, uh, the goals in the comprehensive plan, which talk about support for fair and equal access to housing for all persons regardless of disability. Uh, and specifically, goal H4 to support housing options for special needs population. Mr. Champagne's patients are, uh, disabled, that's why they're in a personal care home. And, uh, I think this would allow them to take, be full members of, uh, your community. It's, it's totally in line with the suburban character area in the comprehensive plan. And meets the goals that that looks for, including, uh, again, uh, increasing the availability of special needs housing. In regards to complete licenses, Mr. Champagne and his wife already have a license for their existing facility in Decatur. They just have to get permission from the city before they can transfer that to, uh, their new, uh, residence. And, uh, also, this is Mr. Champagne's wife's, uh, principal source of income. Um, and so currently, they're sitting with two mortgages or two house payments, waiting to be able to move and, and reduce that house payment and get on with, uh, their business. So again, I think this is consistent with all the, the zoning and policies described in the comprehensive plan. And I think that should make it easy for you to approve this slip this evening. Beyond that, uh, I would also like to point to, uh, the Fair Housing Act, which protects, uh, personal capabilities in land use decisions such as this one. I think, uh, that clearly applies here. And, um, it has provisions for reasonable accommodation and for no other reason. You can approve this slip. I would ask that you approve it as a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act.
What's your name, attorney?
William Tomlin.
Take a breath for it. It's, it's good, it's good.
Yeah.
No, no worries. You're, you're within your time. Councilwoman, pardon. Your ship on this one.
Um, no worries. Uh, front of order.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Front of order. In public hearing, you don't need to sign, uh, well, we have a practice, sign it up, matter of fact. We kind of just stated when we first started this process, that those speaking in favor of would get 10 minutes. Those speaking against would get 10 minutes. So when you said that no one signed up to speak against, that cut it off without giving those who may not be in favor of it to have a chance to publicly express their concerns.
However, the, the, when, when the applicant, the applicant can take his time to speak for it. And that's what, and, and, and that's what, and that's what he's doing.
Right, absolutely.
Unless I'm, unless I'm, there's something still there.
The applicant would be afforded 10 minutes, and then he could either reserve his remaining time or allow any participants to use it, and at that time, we would need to call the floor for opponents. So we actually go applicant, proponents, opponents rebuttal.
And that's why I was looking for the proponents, would that be the next step after he makes his presentation and reserves his time, to go to those who are opponents to have that say before we go into the, uh, general council questioning?
Yes, sir.
All right, so with that, um, was time to, this young man reserves for himself? All right.
And with just a further clarification on that, just for everybody's, uh, knowledge and benefit. When, when Ms. Megan said, you know, nobody signed up against it, well, you know, I mean, somebody could have heard the presentation and now they've decided they're against it. And so, you know, yeah, we'd absolutely, would, I wouldn't have let us not call for the next sayers. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Well, so when we, in a public hearing, they say, don't come forward. I give them time to come forward. Then I call for either...
Well, oh, right, you know, you, you, you're saying it's very proper. All I'm saying is theoretically, it's possible that, you know, people came here tonight and they had no opinion about this, you know, and now they've heard, you know, what they hear in the public hearing may spur them to want to make comments that they didn't want to make before. I said, I'm sorry, I'm calling more harm than good.
Now, I'm just saying they were shut down before they had a chance, so.
Uh, and all I'm saying is, is, you know, as long as I'm not asleep over here, they, they wouldn't be shut down. I'm sure your attorneys would have, would have loud on their comments there.
All right. Uh, Madam Attorney, how would you like proceed?
Are you finished, sir?
Yes.
There we go.
Then at this time, you would ask if anybody else wished to speak in favor?
All right, does anyone of us like to speak in favor? That's what I thought. Now, so with it.
The opponent, downstairs.
All right. So those that have heard an opportunity to change their minds and hear him for five minutes, you would now be the opponents, and you can come forward.
Mayor, some sick in person. This is a very nice neighborhood, and I cannot help, and I've seen pictures, I've driven that street. I cannot help but think that this would have an impact on property values. And I don't think Stonecrest needs that. Second, while it is imprecise to say that the community has too many personal care homes, we all know that the community has too many personal care homes. Period. Stonecrest does. And while, while they serve a good purpose, and there are good people doing it, especially the first woman, who I frankly hope gets her a permit, this one bothers me, and there's a second reason that bothers me, which is that I am concerned that the person applying for the permit is not as dedicated to rules and regulations as we might like. As evidenced by the fact that he illegally built a driveway extension into a stream buffer, which was the subject of the other hearing about him. And then when that was noticed, he has come to the city to say, I'm sorry, I didn't know, and that's my excuse, so could you please allow it? And I don't know if that was approved or not, or what the status is, but a driveway near a stream means gas and oil getting into the stream means less permeable surface and more runoff, et cetera, et cetera. And it concerns me that this driveway extension could have something to do with the personal care home. I don't know. But I just want to bring that to your attention as something to think about. Thank you very much.
Could I just speak on the one on Penola Road?
So much more time available on this one.
I guess I am against.
This is the 5714 South Crest Lane that we're dealing with right now. Which is in District Five. So having said that, are there any other speaking against? Ms. Fanny, how are you doing?
I am Fay Garner. I am not against either one of these personal care homes. But we have, in the District Five, personal care homes that their people are walking the streets. We were at our church last weekend, and I'm not going to use the name, we all know him. He walks the streets all the time. Nobody cares for him. When he came into our church, um, let's, Wednesday, we could not understand a word he said. He was very dirty. No hair was combed, his clothes were falling off of him. And not to say, I am not against personal care homes. I am against personal care homes who do not care for their personal health. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk?
Six minutes, seven seconds.
Anyone that's in opposition? Go once. Twice. Madam Clerk, you can close opposition. I think the young man still had time left with regards to his, uh, is that a D, Madam?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'd just like to address, uh, a few points that were made in the opposition. First, uh, Mr. Champagne and his wife have been operating a personal care home without any incident, uh, in City of Decatur licensed under the state, properly following, uh, the rules. And I don't think, uh, fear of a disabled person wandering around would be a legitimate reason to deny this application. In terms of driveway, uh, the city ordinance requires four parking spaces of personal care home. Uh, Mr. Champagne has that. He only have two patients, no more than three. So there won't be an issue with too many people coming. As to variance, that was handled through proper procedures at, I believe, the Board of Zoning Appeals. And, uh, that was resolved by Board of Zoning Appeals, and Mr. Champagne will remove the offending portion of the driveway that extends into a buffer. That will no longer be an issue.
Let me ask you about that.
Yes.
How many is that? So this, um, um, how many feet was he approaching on, and how much did he have to cut off? How many feet was he approaching on, and how much did he have to cut off?
I haven't represented him on that, so I don't know.
Very easy.
He was approaching of four feet on the north side, and he was approaching 10 feet on the south side, for a total of 120 square feet.
And then four. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, to think it became in a kind of diagonal...
But he needed part of that to accommodate what was required?
No, that was a new driveway he had added himself.
I see.
I'm not visiting the home, the existing driveway would have been adequate to provide the required parking.
He still has time, but we can move now to, if it's okay, we can have the counsel.
I think we closed public hearings.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be close public hearing on this item, this is item number 19002.
All right, probably move down a second.
I'll second it.
Probably move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, public hearing is now closed. Ambassador, you can come back up front. Counselwoman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I have received a number, there's only about, I think, 34 homes in South Crest, and about 15 of those homeowners have come to me with concerns about this personal care home, and not only did they come to me, I believe about 15 or more of them did in fact come to the zoning hearing, and they had many, many, many concerns about it, and one of them, I want to go back to Mr. Marcus's comment, I heard concerns about property values, it's a very, very nice upscale neighborhood, and like I said, more than half the residents over there have expressed displeasure for more than, more than a few reasons. I think one of them was they felt like rules and regulations were not being followed on this end, and we haven't even gotten to the back end, on the front end, and the other one that has to be taken into consideration is property value. People's homes are their greatest assets, and if you read our charter, it talks about this council making decisions that are in the best interest first, in favor of what's good for the quality of life for the residents here, and like someone have eloquently said, it's not for or against, it's just simply that people are very concerned about their property value. But I do want to go on the record saying that not only did they come to me, but I actually watched the video footage, and if you were here, were you here for, you were not here, they lined up right over there, and it was about 15, and that wasn't all of them, just 15 of them were lined up, because I counted them, and every last one of them said the same thing, that they were very concerned about the property value in their neighborhood, and they were very concerned about the rules and regulations, and they were very concerned about, there were lots of questions about the space that the, that the patient, the person they were caring for, there were questions about the lower level versus the upper level, there were questions about the unfinished basement, and there were just a lot of concerns.
Yes.
And I need to ask Mr. Wheeler, can you share with me one more time, what was staff recommendation at that particular meeting?
Staff recommendation was approval of the applicant, because again, the property is being used as a single family use, so, and then one of the, one of the housing policies of our comp plan was to provide a housing priority for senior citizens, and personal care home is a housing option for seniors, senior citizens who can afford assisted living or, or big health, I mean, big community development, so personal care homes are a valid option for a personal, for senior citizens.
Okay, thank you. Did you consider quality of life for the residents here?
Unfortunately, that, we don't take that into consideration as far as the criteria, that leave that up to the city council to determine.
Okay, property values?
Again, that's up to the council.
Sir?
You.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Mr. Wheeler, in your staff recommendation on the record is approval with conditions?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us the conditions?
Hey, you want to say it for me?
Sure.
I apologize, I don't seem to have on staff report one with conditions recommended. Kind of give over to you, the staff recommendations were up to six, six residents, the applicant would have to comply with all zoning, zoning and rules and regulations of the city of Stonecrest, the applicant would, of course, would have to live there as a resident, and the special, and the permit itself would be non-transferable, so if the applicant happened to move from the city of Stonecrest, and another person comes in and buys a home, therefore they wouldn't be able to apply for, wouldn't be able to use a special land use permit, they would have to come in, come in forward, city council again to get approval, and that's just my recommended conditions for the applicant. Okay, thank you. Specific, limit the use of the personal care home up to six, access shall be limited to the existing curb pub off South Crest Lane, all refuse containers shall be screened from public view except during pickup, no identification signed for personal care homes shall be posted on the property, the applicant shall secure the necessary certifications by the state of Georgia, and necessary business license, building permit, and certified occupancy for six person from the city of Stonecrest, the special land use permit shall be issued to Franklin Champagne owner for the operation of the personal care home, and shall not be transferable, the use is subject to self-imposed regulations for personal care homes cited in the Stonecrest ordinance, section 4.2.31 and 4.2.41.
I have that lady back there on here. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I got another question.
Mayor, I'm with, next, I'll be correct. For the last 15 years, I've been fighting personal care homes for a couple of reasons, one of which is they were bringing a commercial operation into residential community, and some of them were not properly supervised, and when Stonecrest became a city, we made an effort to strengthen the regulation around personal care homes, one of which was we made sure that it was for the person who owned the home, could have someone in their home to care for them, and not run it as a commercial operation, and that was one of the biggest changes we made to the personal care homes in the city of Stonecrest, versus what we had experienced in the cap county, and I understand that there is a concern about strengthening the rules and regulations of ordinance, as pertains to personal care homes, to make it even stronger, but as it stands right now, it appears to me that they've met all of the requirements that are currently in place for a personal care home, and I know you don't have to give a specific reason for denial, but I see none, other than no more.
Mr. Wheeler?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, staff said, staff recommended, yes, what was the outcome of the zoning board?
Of the ZBA, regarding the driveway?
The hearing, you were there, right?
Yes, ma'am, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, because I was there too, and I think that the zoning board voted against it.
No, so you're, so, okay, so this, what's happening at the Board of Zoning Appeals?
No, not the appeals, the zoning board.
Well, you mean planning commissions?
The planning, I mean, I'm sorry, the planning commission.
Okay, yes, ma'am, so...
Planning commission voted no.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was there, I watched the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
And so it was a, I don't know if it was unanimous, but it was a no vote.
Yes, ma'am, you...
After, wait, let me finish, please. After the residents spoke, and the attorneys gave their take on it, the zoning board, the zoning board commissioners, the zoning commissioners voted no. So what I'm hearing is the zoning, we have a full board who hears these cases, they've been trained to hear these cases, they voted no, but then staff is saying, yes, we recommend it, so I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm having issues with ignoring, with staff ignoring, not that you have to, but I'm just saying, you didn't disclose that a moment ago.
I'm sorry, let me, let me explain, so staff, in all zoning cases, everything, when staff breaks the staff report, we give our recommendation, either approval or denial, that's just supposed to board, but then when we present to the planning commission or Board of the Zoning Appeals, they give the recommendation to approve or deny, and based off that, you can take both recommendations, or you can choose whatever recommendation you want to proceed with. My, my recommendation is not to supersede the planning commission.
Mr. Wheeler, I'm sorry, I know, I know, I know where you're going, and you don't need to tell me that, my only question is, the only thing I've heard, and I'm taping it, so just in case I'm wrong, the only thing I heard was staff's approval, I said I didn't hear the full story, that there were lots of people here, and that the zoning commissioners denied it.
So, I'm sorry, counselwoman, I'm trying to understand, what are you, what are you...
Chris, if I may please, Mrs. A, you know, the application like this comes in, the staff sits down, they analyze it, they go through that process, and then they ultimately make a recommendation, you know, for approval, denial, what have you, and of course, you know, that happens without the benefit of any public input, and then that recommendation's forwarded on to the planning commission, and the planning commission, you know, does have the benefit of public input and staff's recommendation, and then they hear, of course, and they make a recommendation to council, just like you said, but, but the staff can't go back and like change their recommendation, you know, based on whatever the planning commission said, I mean, you know, they get one shot at it, and they do their best, and that's what it is, so they can't, he can't go back and say, well, now since the planning commission, you know, recommended denial, staff now is changing our mind, now if he had new information, something that maybe he didn't have before, then that might be something, but in essence, you know, I've probably sat through a thousand of these, and you know, you know, sometimes the staff recommends denial, and the planning commission recommends approval, sometimes they both recommend denial, and the council approves it, I mean, you just can't ever tell what's going to really happen, I mean, I've, I've seen it, every combination you can possibly see it, so, and I hope that answers your question.
It, well, I didn't...
I mean, in other words, staff is, staff is stuck with their recommendation, I guess, is what I'm saying, once they make it, you know, they're on the record, and that's that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, and I understand that, and I appreciate you adding those comments, however, as I said, we didn't get full disclosure, all I heard was that staff, and staff does, that's their job, to make a recommendation, but also, we have a board in place, and they made a recommendation too, and that recommendation was no, so staff's recommendation was yes, right? So we get to consider all the evidence, this council is entitled to hear all the evidence, the only reason I know is because, first of all, they reached out to me, second of all, I was there, third of all, I reviewed the tape, so I think that I have seen and heard all the information that was presented, more than anyone else up here on this board tonight for this particular case, so all I'm saying is, I did hear all the information.
Won't you move? Counselwoman, call. Counselwoman, call.
As far as litigation goes, I try to be very careful about what we do and what we say, and our opinions about how we personally feel, so when we are considering permits, similar to staff, we have to take great consideration into what we have written in ordinance to what is required for a permit and what is not, so although we do have the favor of public comment, and we get to hear how the community feels about it, we almost have to be even more careful about imposing our personal feelings into what is written by ordinance or requirements for a permit, so I just want to, I just want to make sure that we are careful in our selection of conversation, because, I mean, to me, in the staff report is very clear, we have a set number, it's a checklist, it's actually a checklist, like literally a checklist, and as long as that's the way we have written the ordinance, that is what staff has to go by, and when it comes to litigation or appeals for a permit, it's also according to the requirements that we set by ordinance, correct?
For a special land use permit, that's correct, and so you would decide not just based on staff's opinion, but the evidence in the staff report, the evidence in the planning commission, and the evidence that was presented to you by the applicant and the people tonight, and some of that may be personal opinion, but you would take the evidence from those statements and the facts from those statements and say, does it meet one of these standards or not, and if you find that any one standard is lacking, then it's for denial, for special land use permit, they have to present sufficient evidence of each, so yes, you're correct.
And should we deviate from that, then we are held to the potential of an appeal or litigation, because we did not follow those steps.
You do not follow the steps, now whether or not there's evidence of a step would be for you to decide.
Okay, question, in your opinion, at the zoning hearing, they considered all the information, they heard all the testimony, and they have the, they have the same set of rules that we have, right? So they, I'm just trying to see why some feel like we may be deviating, and I'm very concerned when someone say, we're deviating because we're, we're taking a look at the entire picture, not just one item, we're supposed to look at everything, the zoning board is in place to do just that, do you agree?
The planning commission is just another tool.
Yeah, it's a tool, well, it's a tool that we use, though, is it a tool that we use?
Yes.
We have them in place to review these cases for us, and they have the same set of rules, so if they voted, if they said their recommendation was no, did they deviate? Did they deviate from something, I'm asking you.
That's possible, but that's a subjective question.
When you said deviate...
They're human, just like we are, so they have, they have personal considerations just as well as evidential consideration, just like we do, so just because we have a difference of opinion doesn't mean that we are...
This is not personal.
No, it's not personal, but since I'm the one that made the comment about deviating, therefore, I'm going to rebuttal about that comment.
Well, I would like to...
So the comment was made, and this is not the first time that the, that the planning commission has made a recommendation opposite of staff or opposite of council, and we have not gone into a two-hour debate about the differences of the three bodies, but to make sure that we're clear, we as council are the ones that have to face litigation, no one else does when you make a decision, so when you, when you make a decision on a permit, based on information that's not according to the ordinance that we put in place, we face litigation, so my, my question was simply, if the evidence is in front of us, and the, and the rules are written, and we deviate from that, what is the ramification? You answer that for me, so it's not a personal attack on anyone or any body of people, it's straight up fact.
What is, um, counselwoman, or should I speak to the council as a whole, what is not in accordance with the ordinance?
Land value, property value is not a list, is not on the checklist, affecting property value is not on the checklist for the ordinance, now do we want to rewrite the ordinance? We can talk about that, but on the checklist that staff goes by, it doesn't say, will this permit affect property value, yes or no, that's not there, so although that is something that we consider as humans, it's not something on the checklist, so staff can't say, well, you know what, it looks like the property value is going to go down by 10 grand, so that's a no, I mean, we can't, we, by evidence, there's no evidence of that, so that's an example of deviation.
I, I don't agree with you there.
I... I mean, that's like, what, babe?
I don't agree. I was at the zoning hearing and I heard the evidence. I actually heard it. Have you listened to it, Ms. Cobb?
I looked at the staff report. Staff report has a checklist.
No, but did you listen to the hearing?
I don't have to listen to it. I'm going by the checklist that we have ordinance. That's very simple. There's an ordinance that we have to go by for evidence.
I will say the standard, I, whether the proposed use will create adverse impacts upon any adjoining land use by reason of manner of operation of the proposed use.
And it says no.
And then S, whether the proposed use would be consistent with the needs of the neighborhood or the community as a whole, be compatible with the neighborhood and not be in conflict with the overall objective of the comprehensive plans.
You get the decision.
And so it would be your job tonight to determine whether you think that it did or if it wasn't the evidence that's been presented to you. And I will never say that the planning commission deviated standards up here, just so you know. You can, but I can't.
Okay, the mayor just said whatever council district is seeing, that that person would take the lead. That's called warrant courtesy. So I hope he will extend that to me like he's doing with other council members.
I've already extended it to you.
Thank you, sir.
For 30 minutes.
Then I'll make the motion, Mr. ... I'm Mr. Mayor and council, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
The motion on the table from Councilwoman Adama is to deny. Do we have a second? We do not have a second. Now you have to have a motion that is different than denial.
Then I'm gonna make a motion to defer.
There's been a motion to defer. Do I have a second? We do not have a second to defer. There's only one other option.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve this SLUP 19002, first of the K R O five seven, one four south, that's the lane.
All right.
Second.
There's a problem, move and second. Any further discussion? Same time, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
SLUP 19002 passes. All right, we will move to the first reading for the updated telecommunications regulations, T mod 190004.
And the ordinance for the city of Stonecrest, Georgia provides in section 4.2.57, wireless telecommunications of Article 4, Use Regulation of Chapter 27, zoning of the mode of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia, to comply with requirements of federal rulings and state and federal laws on telecommunications facility regulations. And this is essentially the ordinance rewrite that brings us into compliance with recent legislation enacted by the Georgia General Assembly and rulings of the Federal Communications Commission.
All right, council, you have any questions for, council? I mean, have any questions for Attorney Demong?
No, this is the first read. I have not totally commented with detail. But other than this bringing us into compliance, what does it really do for us in terms of the issues that we face with cell towers in the city so far?
Well, Congressman Turner, the one of the most prevalent issues that we've been discussing over the last several months relates to public notice of when these applications are filed, notification to both the public and to the mayor and council. And in section F, F5D, it will be very difficult to find based on this draft. And I wish I had a page number to refer you to, but it's section F5D. We address, and I'll read it. The same information shall also be published in the city's legal organ in an ex-available edition after receipt of a completed application. In addition, the application shall be forwarded to the mayor and city council. So essentially, that concern has been addressed in terms of notification of both the public and of the mayor and council. What I will say, and it kind of mirrors the conversation that we've been having with this last SLUP, public notice and notice to the mayor and council is just that. We are constrained by federal law, which draconian is the application in terms of creating a clear legal path for these macro towers. And we've talked about it before, that preempting federal law limits severely what local communities around the country can do in terms of resisting the effort of these tower companies and these cellphone carriers to affect these macro facilities. However, we have made sure that all that we can do, we have done with whatever they've left for us in terms of local authority. And we've also added the ability or the requirement that both the public and the mayor and council be notified. And that notification might be somewhat of a hollow victory because even once we have notice and we have public hearings, we will still be constrained by the narrow confines of the authority that the federal government has left to cities around America.
Something else I did scan, and it talked about different height of towers that supplies to any communication devices?
Well, we, there are the macro towers, then there's the small cells. And so this ordinance would apply to both. We have all of them, yes.
It captures all of them?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Okay, council? All right, so that was the first read?
So, Mr. City Attorney, is there anything we can control in reference to the location of these towers?
Certainly, we can control some things, and I guess, it's very difficult because, you know, with the state of Georgia and our General Assembly much to my dismay, and the Georgia Business Association lobbied against it, they, very little in terms of what we can do, especially like even in public rights way, it is, they have, I would call it a free hand, but the hand is not much restricted.
Thank you, sir, for the first read. All right, we'll move for the first reading for the use tables update. Modified personnel chair, Councilwoman Cobb, Congress.
Supposed to have a public hearing for the use table? Sorry, I didn't create any issue for this one.
Okay. So, I apologize. Say again?
I didn't hear.
Supposed to be a public hearing for the use table for the city to, for residents?
There's supposed to be a public hearing on the wireless, the telecommunications.
But, Mr. Mayor, you can just open a public hearing on...
Okay. I'll take a motion to open for a public hearing for the updated telecommunications.
Motion, open.
All right. All right, good deal. Probably move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk and Mr. City Attorney, same.
Well, the city has no particular applicant, so you can just go for against, against for, whatever, what do you prefer?
All right, we'll start with those that are opposed to what you heard the City Attorney move. They can't be...
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is another one of those instances where I fervently wish that there were a third category in addition to for and against. I wish there were a category that mostly for with one particular point to make. First of all, let me say that I very much appreciate what Mr. Denmark and his, Ms. Vermont have done as far as adding the provisions for public notification of the completed application. Once the application is filed, there'll be a notice published in On Common Ground News that there will be a sign posted on the property and that there will be notification sent to the mayor and city council. It's all wonderful. That needs to be done. I agree completely with Mr. Denmark also that unfortunately, the city is very limited by federal law, federal presumption about whatever it can do to oppose the actual, or limit the actual construction of the monocle. But I do really believe that folks don't wanna be surprised. Even if there's nothing that can be done, at least they'll have an idea that this thing is coming down the pike and get themselves ready for it. If there is a reason to object, they can. I would say that I would have one additional thing should be considered for addition to this ordinance, notification when the permit is granted. Do the same thing, you have it, two points. The completed application filed, all right. Put the notice in the On Common Ground News, sign and everything. And then when it's granted, if it's granted, you do the same thing. I don't think that there could be any objection based on federal presumption to that additional notification. And I think that right there will go toward making sure that folks are, at least are not surprised when they turn around one day and then they see the cellphone monocle going up in their backyard. Thank you.
Okay.
I have two want to sign that.
Okay.
Nate Marcus.
Okay, he has departed, Alice has left the building.
Renee Cal, Cal, Renee.
Sheila.
Okay. Anyone else in speaking in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. This is the first time that I've been to a meeting. I was invited by a friend. And my issue is notification other than the crossroads when there's gonna be meetings in the community. We have a lot of churches around here and the members in the church, people in my community, have no idea. So being a part of the city of Stonecrest, we do wanna be more involved in what goes on in Stonecrest. And we don't want Stonecrest to just look like any other city. We wanna keep it clean, green, and beautiful. There's a lot of undeveloped land around here which can be used for better things than cell towers. And like gentlemen just said, even though it's public and whoever has to finalize it, which could be the council, I'm not sure, that we do need to be aware before that's done. You know? And I wouldn't want to wake up one morning and find tile in my backyard.
Really?
And whatever green space we have, the parks, the trails, we need to keep it as such.
Ma'am, if you don't mind me asking, what neighborhood do you live in?
I live District Four.
Okay.
I'm sorry, District Three, but it's common.
Okay, okay.
So I'm between Pinola and here.
And here. And if you don't mind, I'm a church man myself, so when you say church, what church do you attend?
I attend Denver.
Oh, Denver, huh?
I've been there for many, many years.
Good, excellent. Okay, excellent. All right, thank you for your time. Oh, ma'am, I'm sorry. She needed to change.
Angela Russell.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
You're welcome.
How much time for Madam Clerk?
Six minutes and five seconds.
All right, any, anyone still against? I think we are good for opposition, Madam Clerk. And let's move to those that support the ordinance. All righty then. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Whether we close the public hearing on telecommunications regulations?
All right, probably move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. So, Mr. City Attorney, we move then to the second read and voting from there or this for another date?
We will, second read.
What's the read?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't know whether it was the pleasure, I mean, I thought tonight had an idea in terms of the complication in terms of when it was approved, unless the pleasure of the council to approve the first read subject that change. I don't know the pleasure of the council in that regard.
Okay, so the, you're speaking of Attorney Knight?
Yeah, right, in terms of add a provision for notification when the permit is granted.
Got it.
I don't know who was the pleasure of the council.
So is it the requirement for a second read or we can actually approve it tonight?
No, sir, no, it's the first. I think he just wanna know if we're okay with the changes then on the Jewish group. He was returning looking for. What's the name, how, Attorney Knight?
Yeah, Attorney Knight.
I am.
You have the motion, so...
No, I mean, just to be safe. Then if we ask with no question, and so that would be fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Move that we consider adding comments about additional notification when the permits are approved.
All right, I'll probably move to have a second.
Same.
All right. Need further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that's it. Yes, sir. Number four, use tables update to modify personnel and child care homes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have already made a few minor changes to the use table and it's caused some confusion to the public about which use table is the right one. So what we wanted to do was go ahead and re-adopt the use table in its entirety, which would also show those changes that have already been made and then update just two new changes. And the two new changes would be child caring home, child caring facility, childcare, daycare, personal care home, personal care facility, where are all new definitions that we kind of tweaked when we did the revisions to the childcare ordinance a few months ago. And so we just wanted to go ahead and change the definition, literally, on the table to the new correct term. And then the second ordinance change would be, you just heard the telecommunications ordinance, that also changes some of the terms that were used in the use table. It's now changed to a new support structure from 51 feet to 150 feet, new support structure from 50 feet up to 199 feet, and small cell installations. And so this substantively isn't changing anything other than the names of that use that was listed right here on this portion, the old names. We wanna change it to the new names, make sure we're incorporating the changes that were made in the short-term vacation rental ordinance, the personal care ordinance, and then in the new ordinance on telecommunications so that staff and the public only have to look at one document. And then you will see it red if there was any changes to the districts, it's gonna be red. So basically, this is a new table being adopted in its entirety, just to make it easier on everybody.
Do we have the floor to open for public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll take a motion for that, council.
Sir?
I'll move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, I'll take the folks that are in opposition.
Anyone signed up? I'm not checking back in public right now.
All right, so we're opening up to the public. You know, you haven't signed up, it is regarding the use tables to modify personally, child care homes, T mod and 19002B. Okay, seeing none. We'll open the floor for those that support the use tables. Okay, seeing none, we'll open the floor for those that support the use tables. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Would we close public hearings on item T, MOD dash 19 dash 0002B?
Alright, properly moved, huh?
Second.
In second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing now closed, first reading is recognized.
I have some comments.
Yes, sir.
Madam Attorney, when you look at this, you really don't know one table from the other, and the changes that have been made, I guess I'd have to lay them side by side to compare to the old. So the thing that would help me the most is to have a date on here, I know there's a number at the bottom of this page, is this a control number that indicates a date? Because otherwise, I won't know which table I'm looking at.
Yes, sir, that would be, I could, that's my internal way of telling the decretes, but I could put a revision date on the bottom.
That would be really, really good for me.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering what else, because I've got so many of these tables, and it's not very hard to confuse me, so when you don't have a date, it really messes me up.
That's why we want to have a new one, so it's all in one place, and that there's no argument over what is the proper one.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our Council will move to new business. Number one, the standard operating procedure for council preparation for contract recommendation. Hello again, Ms. Hall.
Well, hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, for this operating procedure, I would like to make the corrections that was recommended before we actually vote on this, and also the corrections that you told me to make. I would like to make those corrections in this document. And I would like to work with Julian and the attorney on our manuals and procedures, and also get an update on our new purchasing policy. Would you all agree?
Alright, Council, you have the floor.
In the interim, I saw multiple policies, so in the interim, can you email the Council, or at least I'd like a copy of, what set of policies are we presently governed by in the interim? Because it might take a while for you to do what you have to do.
Yes.
And I don't want to rush you, because we need to get it right the first time. So, if you could just email me, just what is it that we're operating under at the present time, so I'll know.
That sounds right.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, Council, then I'll take a motion for the approval of the standard operating procedure presented by Ms. Hall.
Are we voting on it? I thought she said.
The changes.
I thought she, oh.
I thought she wants to come back with the changes.
Oh, I apologize, I thought, uh.
Yes, I would like to come back with the changes that you.
My apologies, um, yes.
That you want to agree.
I thought we were doing it right now. No worries, no worries. You can, you can come back.
That makes sense.
Come back.
Yes, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
It was okay with me. Okay, um.
Take a motion for the third one?
We need a motion.
We never, we never stated for the, we, we.
I think you guys would all sleep better if y'all voted. I know how y'all.
I'll take a motion for the third one.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we defer until the recommendations and changes have been integrated into the process.
Alright, second, properly moved in, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
Now, into business number two, recommendation for contract with selected vendor, landscaping maintenance and general tourist service for Parkson Recreation, for the entire Stonecrest park system, Mr. Palmer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Sean Palmer, Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Stonecrest, for the record. We went over this at work session, you've had two weeks roughly to peruse, examine, and dissect the contract and the information. If you would like to ask me any questions, I'm here to answer any questions.
Council, floor is yours.
You say entire Stonecrest park system, that does not include Arabia Mountain?
For this definition within this contract, yes, sir, does not include the Arabian Mountain parcel, or parcels, or property.
Okay, and in your estimations, did you ever consider that as what it would cause this area? Did you ever consider to add Arabia Mountain to it?
For maintenance?
Yes.
It would be part, it would be phased out depending on what level of maintenance we're talking about, and what type of work we're talking about, a comprehensive analysis. We would actually have to bring someone in to do that, and a company that would compete for vending would probably give us a very broad pricing for that, and not something that we would get into hash marks that we were looking at originally.
Okay, well, since it's not a part of this, then I'll come to you one day, and we can talk about that.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, thanks.
Okay, Council, may I, for? I will take a motion for the approval of the recommended contract for the vendor for landscaping, maintenance, and general tourist service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we approve this contract. That's written.
Okay, properly moved, do it in a second. Alright, I'll second, any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment, you made a motion as written, there will be amendments made to it, the date will change, the dates will, well, the execution date will change one, and then, and then it will not be in, the service will not be provided until we actually acquire the park, so I'm just a little leery about as is.
Yes, it would not be approved as is it would be approved with that modification that we discussed earlier in the work session, that the dates would change, and then as we finish the IGA, and then we sit with the vendor to lay out the transition period, because they have to start to stage equipment, we have the meeting schedule, we would pro-rate per whatever month we would start service, or whatever time we start service.
I would like to amend my motion, but before that, I would like to add to Council member Cobble, if what the park director just said is, is okay. That's good? Okay, so my motion is to approve with the modifications that we made in the work session.
Second.
Alright, properly moved in, second, for the substitute motion. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Clerk, for the record, I'd like to abstain from this vote, and I believe according to the charter, I do have the right to abstain under section, if you can put this in the record, under section 2.10, I can abstain, I can abstain if I give a reason to be part of the official minutes. And the reason I'm abstaining is because the process, the vetting process included an elected official, even if the scores are removed, the elected official still played a role in vetting this contract. So as a result of that, because of the legal issues, I am compelled to abstain, and I'd like for that to be part of the official minutes and the records that I abstained, and please indicate the reason why. And the section in the charter that gives me the abstaining power is in section 2.10,
Mr. City Attorney, appears as though you're perusing something.
No, sir. The letter, yes, right in the charter, that's a non-congratulatory one, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, okay. Number three, fiscal oversight role of council person for charter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would be an ordinance, our policy, where the city council, the mileage rate would be voted on by each, by the council each year, even if the mileage rate is zero, we'll properly advertise it to the residents, and a public hearing will be required, as outlined by the Georgia law at OCGA 485-32, that we will hold at least one public hearing under the state law, and, and that we can also combine, the budget hearing and the mileage hearing can be combined. This policy would simply ensure that the public is informed, and that the tax commissioner will be notified timely of this rate, even if this rate is zero, based on the Georgia reporting laws. And the reason for this is because the mileage can be negative, we can hold the citizens a refund, I don't think that's the case, and I don't think anyone's going to complain about a zero. However, it's best practice to have a mileage rate adopted, and this particular, I'd like for this to be a policy where each year, even if the mileage is zero, we will vote on the zero mileage rate, simply because it could be negative, it could be plus one. And in addition to that, under fiscal responsibility, this would be another ordinance, or you can combine the ordinances. This one would be under the purchase and selling of real estate transactions, whereas in addition to all other powers conferred upon it by law, the city council should have the authority to adopt and provide for the execution of policies, rules, and regulations, not inconsistent with this charter and the constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia, which it shall deem necessary, expedient, or helpful for the peace, good order, protection of life and property, health and welfare. So transactions involving the purchase of real estate will be based on, only on market and appraisal value, and if the purchase transaction exceeds the market rate or the appraisal value, it will be referred back to the council for approval. Any real estate transactions inconsistent with basic and customary Georgia lending laws will be analyzed for best practice, and the council will vote after they have received all documentation and the appraisal has been submitted for review. And if conflicts of interest exist with the purchase of property and is discovered, that particular council member will abstain from voting, or will recuse themselves. Any commissions to be paid on property will be evaluated by the council at the time that the appraisal is submitted for review. This policy can be reviewed annually, every, every October when the budget is created, to ensure that council is fiscally responsible, and is applying best practice, lending, and purchasing laws.
The second one you read, Councilwoman O'Donoghue, we do today, by the letter, so I don't understand why we would need a policy to do that.
Which one?
The one you just spent some few minutes reading, this second one about your real estate, we do that as, as we do today, we follow that to the letter, today, we get appraisals, we bring them back to you all, you find out about it, we vote, you approve it, we just did one just like that, we followed, we followed the exact same procedure.
I think I got the appraisal after the check was mailed, I don't know what everybody else got, but this was, just for that very reason, Mr. Mayor, simply because I'm not sure if the information is being shared consistently and at the same time, and so this would be a policy that would just allow all the council members to get the information at the same time. I don't think the city manager will argue about when I requested the information, and I don't know if this is a Councilwoman Adama thing, this is a policy, this is just for best practice, and that's all I'm saying, and if you, if it went out, I didn't receive it, so this policy would ensure that we're, we're making good decisions about how we spend the people's money, even if it's, even if other people are doing it the same way, I think we need to have best practice. And I didn't know that the, when I got the appraisal, the check had already been mailed, and the case was closed, so I don't know how I could have done anything about that.
Councilwoman Cobble.
First, I just want to ask, I didn't see those documents in our packet, do we have those, are they in there?
What documents?
You were just reading.
No, I was just reading, there were no documents, those were just comments.
Okay, can you send us that, so we can review it, so we can kind of have a discussion, a prepared discussion about the policy recommendations you're making?
Sure, I believe the sponsors of the bill may have the comments, but there's no official documentation to attach, other than the, the section that I read on the Georgia law, and which is in the charter, the rest of the information I read, I simply plucked it out of the charter, so you actually have access to, yeah, that's all in the charter.
I missed out the city, I thought you were requesting that the council formulate a policy.
Well, we need a policy, because this year, as you know, if you look at my email back from August of 2018, I extensively questioned why we were exempting ourselves from adopting a mileage rate. I was told because it was zero, by council members, and by the city manager, if it was zero, that we didn't have to adopt a mileage rate, which I understand that. And what I'm asking for, Council, is that we adopt a policy that puts consistency in place, best practice in place, because you cannot assume that the mileage, that a zero mileage rate is acceptable to the residents, and even the Georgia code says you still need to advertise it, it doesn't say if it's zero, you don't have to advertise it. We didn't hold at least one public meeting, and this was before your term, Mr. Jackson, you would not have been part of this.
So that is a policy you're requesting that we draft, right? So I'm just asking, can you send what you're requesting, so we can look at it?
Yes.
So that was one policy. And then just to make a comment about that, though, I know we did go through this a year or so ago, but if I'm not mistaken, and maybe Madam Clerk, you can help me, if we do hold a public hearing and advertise, we do have to make that a referendum, you know, then we have to put it on, on the ballot, if we advertise, even if it's zero, and we hold a public hearing.
I, I can't keep, remain silent anymore about the laws regarding the adoption of the budget in the state of Georgia, you have to conduct a public hearing, and your mileage rate is tied to that public hearing. For example, let's say you, you said you wanted to levy the limits 3.5 mils, well then your ad that you'd have to run would be about this big in the paper, and you'd have to have three public hearings, and believe me, you know, probably none of us would have any skin left on us after we went through all that. The fact that you levy no mileage means your ad's got to be about that big, and you just got to have one, and, you know, not too many people show up, because, you know, you're one of the few cities in the state of Georgia that does not levy a property to tax. So, they say fools rush in when angels fear to tread. On Mr. Adama's first concerns, I really believe state law and our ordinances will, will satisfy all of that, I can promise you it will, if we go through the budget process and I'm still here, because that's all tied together, hat in hand, and I don't, I don't make any comments about what happened last year, because I wasn't here, I don't know. And when it comes to the purchase of real. And when it comes to the purchase of real estate, there's a, Mr. Attorney, I'm sure you'll keep me straight. There's a kind of a process a city has to go through to buy property. And, you know, I wasn't here exactly, I didn't quite get here in time for the property purchase. But I'm assuming that we have followed the law relative to that transaction. But again, if we could spend a little more time, maybe, Mr. Adama, I might be able to make you feel a little bit more comfortable about some of this stuff. I'm certainly willing to try.
Let me just add that identifying where these rules and regulations are would help a whole lot. And I'm up for putting ordinances and regulations in place, but not for reinventing the wheel. So we already have these things in place sometimes. It's just a matter of identifying where we can access this information.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. You know, if you let the city councils make their own rules about disclosing the millet rate, you know, telling how it might look or, you know, but the fact is, state law requires you to do certain things. And if you're raising taxes even a little bit, then you're going to get the public's attention if you follow state law.
Yeah, and sometimes I'll say that's all you do, just reference that state law, case closed.
Well, we had the state law when I questioned it back in August of 2018. I'll show you the emails. I questioned it several times. And the state law didn't change. It was in place in August. So obviously, if we have the laws in place and we're not following them, help me understand what's going to be different in the future. The law was there when we said we were, when, not we, the law was there when the decision was made not to adopt a millet rate. That law is not new. So we didn't adopt a millet rate. So the question is, if you see this as being invalid or irrelevant, then help me understand who determines if we follow the state law? Because it didn't happen. And all I'm saying is, if it didn't happen then, we need to ensure that we don't continue to repeat it. I'm of the opinion, if you don't recognize you made an error, then you're going to continue to do it. And if you don't want to adopt a policy, then by God, follow the state laws at least. Somebody, Komo talked about litigation earlier with a personal care home, but no one's discussing litigation with the military, which to me, if you want to look at the magnitude of it, we didn't give the citizens the opportunity to at least have a public hearing on it. Even if it's zero, I'm happy. It's a zero. I don't want my taxes to go up. Very happy with it. But that doesn't mean that you don't have to have the hearing.
So are we clear that we broke or did not break a law? Because if we did break a law, you know, this might be fun for some, but it's not really fun if, I mean, we need to make certain that our meetings are more productive. So if we've broken a law, if we did something that was wrong, then it need to be called out and not, you know, just allowed to continue with this narrative that we may have done something wrong. And if any council member have any evidence or anything that says we didn't did something wrong, then as a council member, as an elected official, it is your duty to point that out adamantly and accurately and, you know, so bring your case. But if you're saying that, okay, we didn't follow one law or one rule, so let's make another one, and that's going to make the thing, anything different, that's a waste of time for me. So if either of you guys, the city attorney or the city manager, see that we've broken a law, then I think it is your duty and responsibility to let the city council know that.
I'd like to add that the attorney-
I was addressing the attorneys, and I really do need answers for them. I've listened to you for over an hour tonight.
But the attorney-
Quite frankly, I'm pretty much getting tired of just hearing all the rhetoric. Right now, we really need to get to the point. And what's important is whether or not we've broken a law, which you apparently allege that we have.
Mr. Attorney. Clearly, that predates me. And this is the first I'm hearing of this. This is August of eighteen. I became city attorney January nineteen. The, so if there's an issue, I'll tell you that there's an issue and it's a matter worth looking into. But this is the first I'm hearing about this.
First of all, I'm really disappointed that one of my colleagues sees this as being kind of like not important. If you look in your email and, let's see, Denmark, you were copied on this and on August fourteenth, twenty eighteen at five oh six P.M., an email was sent. And also, we had two open records requests that came in asking about the millet rate. We had Jennifer Parker with, at that time, the Crossroads News, who sent an email to the mayor and the council asking about the rate. And then I sent an email asking about the rate quoting the Georgia law in the email, and it went to the attorney. So all I'm asking for, Attorney Denmark, is if we're making decisions that are adversary to the Georgia law, who is overseeing that? If anyone? And if the Georgia laws say we need to hold a hearing and adopt a millet and the attorneys were notified, and as of today, we're talking August of twenty eighteen, and as of today, no millet adopted. I just don't understand how you can make that right.
I want to be really, really clear. I was appointed city attorney for the city of Stonecrest, January second, twenty nineteen. Now, before January second, twenty nineteen, I got copied on a whole bunch of stuff. But in terms of sitting in this chair and having responsibility to advise the mayor and council on these matters, I assumed that role January twentieth to January second, twenty nineteen. Now, if you're asked this evening as to me to look into that and to advise the council, I'm happy to do that.
Secondly, I would like to add as well, and I think this is something that council should consider. If any council member wants to put something on the agenda that we are to vote on, then that something, whatever it is, should be written down and specified so that we all have an opportunity, like we do with everything else, to read it and to assess it prior to council. So and also, I think that at some point in time, we have to look at whether or not we should add agenda items just for the city council meeting, just for discussion, when we have ample opportunity to discuss these issues in work session. So if we are voting on it in city council, I'm still wondering, even though we can add items to the city council member, but is that the prudent thing to do? And is that a good use of our time for the city council meetings? For the work session, I absolutely agree. Whatever it is that we need to talk through and talk out, we should add that to work session. And then if you want to, as a group, formulate what our game plan is regarding that particular issue, then as a group, you can discuss it. And maybe we can come to the conclusion that we can then add to council session and we maybe be able to vote on it at that point in time. And that would also give our attorneys an opportunity to look in, look in, look at what we're proposing and to chime in as to whether or not we should go forward with that action.
And just for the record, it was on to, we discussed it in two work sessions?
No.
No, no, no. It's been discussed. I researched it before today.
This is the first time that these two items have been on any agenda anywhere. And if you can show anything different, I will implore you to do that because you cannot, because that's not it.
It's amazing how you're arguing. It's amazing how you're arguing for, instead of you arguing that we do the right thing for best practice, you're arguing about, you know, it haven't been on a work session. You missed the whole point. The whole point is, Georgia law says we need to adopt a millet. I asked if we could follow the Georgia law. And if so, if we're not following it, my question was, who oversees whether or not we're doing it? And you missed the whole point because you're focused on, did it go on a work session?
The whole point evidently was to get it on an agenda so that we can vote on it. Now, if your point was to get it on the agenda so you can talk about it, then we've done that. But I, you know, to me, that's a waste of time just to talk about it. If we want to talk about it, let's talk about it in its appropriate place, which is the work session. Now, if we want to vote on it, this is the ample time to vote on it and to bring it to our attention. But if you are serious and sincere about whatever these, this, these items are that you are putting on the agenda, then it just goes to just common sense that you would discuss that specifically, those specific items prior to the council session. We have nothing to vote on tonight. You have nothing written down, nothing to vote on.
I just want to add that if you go back and research the last two years, I'd like to finish, you didn't cut anyone. Mr. Mayor, you constantly cut me off.
You know why? Because you make the meetings long and idiotic for no reason.
The meeting is not idiotic. It's idiotic not to pass a millet rate. That's what's idiotic.
You continue to do the same thing over and over and over.
You know, the truth hurts. The truth hurts. It really does.
It's what it does. Because you don't even have your stuff together for this. So you just keep talking and talking and talking and talking. And you talk people into the system.
You'll adopt the millet after tonight.
I guarantee you, you won't be telling me what to do. So from this point, we're going to number four.
I got a question about the land appraisal, just real quick, just real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
We used law from my purchase, the Salem Road law. By law, we cannot pay more than what the market value is for that property or is the loss different?
And that's-
Not different. Okay. So we got the two appraisals. I did look at them. One was, one number, one was like, they were totally different. One was on one end, one was on the other end. I think one came from the, from the landowner and then one we got from ourselves or Robert and his crew got.
One never came from the landowner. Landowner doesn't do appraisals. But you did get two different appraisals.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah, did, never came from the landowner, no.
Okay, okay. So we got two different appraisals on our own. No, nothing from the land appraisal, I mean, from the landowner. One was one number and one was like five hundred something. One was two something.
Right.
Right, and then so we, well, we sold for three fifty, right? So what, which, what was the actual market value? What did we land on as a?
We could have gone with the higher, we could have gone with the lower. An appraisal is just like anything else. But if we do a condemnation case, if we were to take private property for a public use, the property owner would get their appraiser, the city would get an appraiser, and it'd be the dual of the appraisers, the appraisals. And so each, any appraiser, appraisal from a qualified, certified land appraiser in the state of Georgia is a valid basis for a property purchased by the city. And so, and we got, when we actually purchased a piece of property for lower than its appraised value as much as it was one appraiser that was much higher than the price that we paid.
Okay, so we just about in the middle?
Yes.
So let me add to that. The appraisal value was, one of them was two and a half times the, one appraisal, or can we say these numbers public or is this confidential? Are these numbers public? One appraisal came in at five hundred and fifty thousand. The other one came in at two hundred thousand. The property was sitting at the bank for a hundred and fifteen thousand. The person bought the property before he got it zoned or whatever for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. We paid three fifty. So in my opinion, you know, no bank in their right mind in the nation would have touched that deal if it had to go through a bank. No Realtor would say that that's a good deal. No reputable real estate agent would say that was a good deal. So I just want the record to reflect that I didn't agree with paying a premium of almost two times the cost of the property. And when appraisals come in like that, most banks would not even touch it because the difference between the two is too broad.
We're going to move to number four. Let's say pre-notification process to council.
Just to be brief, I think we touched on it earlier with the telecommunications ordinance that it's important that council gets notification on commercial special administrative permits. And I believe that maybe the city manager is working on this. But, and the notification needs to go, it needs to go through the zoning review board because if it goes through the zoning review board, at least that would allow for accuracy in the zoning information to be verified, to make sure that all the documents are accurate and correct. And also, it would ensure that the community and the citizens would have the opportunity to be notified prior to waking up and cellphone tower or any other infrastructure, whatever it may be, is erected in their community. So we need some type of notification to the community, some type of notification to the council. And this is, and with this particular recommendation, this is coming from all districts. They all are suggesting that we have notification.
Let me just add that special administrative permit notification, what we have so far with being known about of all commercial permits, I think that's a step in the right direction. But at some point, we do need to make it a policy or procedure or whatever. Because prior to this, we had a procedure in place where we were notified of all open records act. And we did not make it a procedure and that kind of went away. So I hate for us to just start a practice and it goes away. So if we put it in as a procedure of sorts, then that would help us in terms of having something in place where the current staff that's available will remember. So I can support something like that.
I would just clarify one thing, Mrs. Bellma. Did you, you were suggesting as part of what you just said, having the zoning board of appeals actually reviewing and be final approval on special administrative permits?
I researched, and that's what all of our sister cities are doing. They're running, we're the only city right now that's not running it through some type of review board. Even if it's right of use, they're still running it through a review board.
Well, that's definitely something for, that staff's going to look into, assuming nobody else has any heartburn with it.
I also support that.
Because, because you know, the more eyes we can get on it, the better, no matter how many we get.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can I, I'd like to make a motion that we put in place a process for notification for special administrative permits. And maybe Julian can work with the city manager, putting together the legal terminology for that. That's something that the citizens really want, some type of action on it. And we've been dealing with it for six months. And as of today, there's nothing, there's absolutely nothing in place today that would protect the citizens against if wine went up tomorrow in my backyard. We don't have, I wouldn't, there's no requirement for me to get notification. I don't know what's so difficult for us to just pass some type of ordinance to get that taken care of.
But if we can legally make it, and you know, assuming that you guys went along with it, if we could make part of that process of review and approval by the board of zoning appeals, well, that's going to trigger all kinds of notification, all kinds of folks. I mean, that's going to basically solve the whole problem, if you ask me. Because it's going to put them through that same process, basically, almost as a result. I mean, they don't have to come before council, but there is going to be a public meeting that everybody would be notified well in advance of. This is going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, and most cities are running them through as a special land use permit. And if we follow the, you know, the template that other cities are doing, then we'll have the notification. Like you said, we won't have to create anything. Just say we're going to make it a sub.
But we are working, we are working towards improving those communications. And I appreciate you saying that was a step in the right direction, sir. And we don't, we don't, we don't follow through.
Yeah. Were you saying it was necessary to have a motion to instruct the city manager or attorneys to grant something? Or they're just going to do that automatically?
Well, you know, I don't think I need any more instruction. I believe, I don't know what to go out and do. But, you know, I'm certainly not going, I mean, y'all can vote and direct us however you'd like.
Wouldn't, wouldn't taking your route, wouldn't that by default change the, change the ordinance that we already have for, I think, for, well, I guess it would be changing the code, not necessarily the ordinance, but wouldn't that change the city code if we put the special?
Administrative permits, yes, yeah, absolutely. We have, you write that into the process.
Right, okay. So then, I mean, I don't know if we necessarily need an ordinance or a policy if it's going to by default change the city codes, right?
Well, yeah, especially if you handle it that way. And that's, as I've been hearing and listening and thinking about ways to do this, I really like that. I mean, if there's a way to include the board of appeals in the process and kind of make them be like a final stop, I think that solves all of the problems that are associated with this.
So that'll come back.
Or almost all of them.
It's on, I'm sorry. It's on the land use chart. You get special administrative permits. They're all coded as SA and a tremendous number of them. And special administrative permits are issued all the time. They're not just for sale topless. So be careful what we ask.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. And it might be a situation where we have to, you know, get creative and write it as such, that we're certain ones, maybe that aren't going to be controversial in it. But again, we're working, we're working hand in hand with you guys and keep you posted on what we find and what we're trying to do.
And so, my question is, in the interim, then, how are we going to handle notification? You know, I'm not rushing you. I don't know how long it's going to take and what the council is going to approve. However, if we have another situation, there's no guarantee that we won't have a situation. And if we have one, there's nothing in place to protect the citizens or the city.
Other than the fact, other than the fact that somebody's going to tell me about it real quick, and I'm going to tell y'all about it about quicker than I heard about it. But you don't, you're right about as far as a written policy that addresses your concern.
Well, that would be excluded in telecommunications, because we just wrote that into the text amendment for telecommunications. So I guess you would exclude that from the other special administrative permits. But we did kind of rectify that in this text amendment.
Right. Now, I'll, we'll reason why you guys look into it and address it in our work session, so we can talk it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Number five.
Additional pavement. This is John. Good evening. This is just coming from the memo from our city engineer. As you recall, last month, the mayor and council agreed to approach resurfacing major roads over the next two years to improve the conditions of the roads that are used by a majority of the residents. We do have the pavement condition index scores from StanTech on all of the major roads. If it is, if it is the desire of the mayor and council to do additional resurfacing this year, we'll need to send out an invitation to bid as soon as possible, actually, by next week. Otherwise, the next round of resurfacing would be delayed until the spring of 2020. Based on available SPOs funds and the limited window due to winter weather, I estimate that we could potentially complete between $2 million and $3 million of additional resurfacing this year. Salem Road, according to our proposal list, Salem Road and Rockland Road would be milled and paved, and Thompson Mill Road would be reconstructed with full depth reclamation, similar to what was done on Turner Hill Road. Our staff will go out and calculate more detailed estimated quantities for milling, asphalt, full depth reclamation, striping, et cetera, and put together a bid document by next week. However, preliminary costs indicate that these streets will be completed for approximately $2.5 million. Below is the potential schedule for this additional restructure, resurfacing. 5/28, which is today, we'd need authorization to proceed. By 6/4, by June 4, we'll release an invitation to bid. By 7, by July 9, we receive those bids from those contractors. July 22, we bring the council a contract for approval. And by July 30, we'd be able to give a notice to proceed, and with an expected completion project of those three roads by November 22 of 2019. So I come for you to request authorization to proceed with an invitation to bid to do additional SPOs paving, according to the schedule.
Council? So let me make, I'm sorry.
I'm not involved.
No, I'm sorry. We have the money. You know what we're doing.
We have the roads.
We have the roads. I'm going to move that we're approved for the staff to go out for, correct RMPs.
Invitation to bid.
Invitation to bid for the aforementioned roads that we talked about.
Second.
All right. You have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All votes?
Madam Clerk, for the record, my no vote is not no on the roads. My no vote is on the, the process. We don't have a comprehensive process. We're continuing to live how it works without a process. So my no vote is not on doing the work, it's the process.
Madam Counsel, you're the vote at hand to what we have. So because you decide to state that it's otherwise, it's not the case. You're voting no against the payment on the road, not the process, because we didn't talk about the process. Process is already in place. So if you're voting no, your no vote stays as it is.
My no vote stays as it is, but Madam Clerk, add my comments. My no vote is the no vote, but add my comment. I have the right to add a comment.
Yeah.
But the mayor is right. It's a no vote with my comment.
I know the hour is late, but I need 10 minutes in the executive session. So I'm going to take your motion to move into executive session for the subject of real estate. All right. Mr. Congress, I'm going to need you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
To go into executive session.
Oh, yeah, we can motion.
One second.
Real estate, real estate.